No in-person attendance by members of the public will be permitted. People who wish to watch or participate in the meeting may do so by finding the meeting at www.southboroughtown.com/remotemeetings. First item on the agenda tonight, which is Monday, September 27th, it's now 7:05, is the master plan committee update. Would that be you, Mrs. Luttrell?
That would be me, Mr. Morris. We met last week on the 22nd. We went through a detailed review of the land use and zoning recommendations, which were created from looking at all the goals and recommendations from all the other chapters and coming up with common themes. And then those were the high-level goals of the land use and zoning chapter. And then from there, we developed recommendations to achieve those goals. We also did a high-level review of the Public Service Resiliency in Schools chapter, which Sam just put together. On the Dropbox, the vision, goals, and planning processes is there. And that kind of goes through where we started and the process we went through to get where we are and how we'll get through this. I'll put the draft chapters in the land use and zoning goals and recommendations on the Dropbox for the next meeting, so you can review them. And our next meeting is October 20th. We will have to figure out a process of how we can, the whole master plan committee can review all the chapters and offer input on them, so we can pull it together. In the committee also was in agreement with the fact that we need professional help to do the final editing and formatting of the plan. So that's that.
Me, but not context, right? They'd just be doing like the, like you said, the formatting and making sure everything looks
Yeah, yeah.
flows right in the, okay. And also, are the chapters on the Google Drive through the master plan committee website, right? You can access them.
Yeah, yeah.
If anyone else is interested.
So I'm really happy that you're at that point. We've been updating the master plan committee actions for at least a year, two years. And it gets to the point where if people are watching, they may understand what you're saying, but don't have the big picture of the requirement for a master plan and our last one. So that first part that you said you were going to put on there about how we got started and how we got to this point is, I think, very timely now, because you're starting to get close to the end. Excellent. Any questions or comments?
Great job.
And we have Jesse, so we have the full board. Hi, Jess. Hi, Jesse. All right. Next item on the agenda. It's a continued public hearing. Six dash eight Turnpike Road modification to major site plan. This is continued from July 19th, August 16th, September 13th. We'll ask the town planner to update us.
All right, since the last meeting, which Dawn just said was September 13th. We granted an extension to continue the public hearing this evening, September 27th, with planning board action by October 1st. On September 21st, we received submission number four from Peter Bemis with plans dated September 20th, 2021, and response letter September 20th, 2021 as well. That submission was sent to the planning board members. And also put on the town, the planning website under news and announcements for the public hearing this evening. We do have an extension request from Peter Bemis that's signed by him. Should there be a need to extend beyond this evening meeting? And that brings us to this evening. So you should have, let's see if there's anything else. Nope, that's it.
Thank you. Hello, Peter.
Good evening. Thank you. So at the last meeting, we had discussed trying to contrast the current plan with the approval and the as-built that was supplied by the previous engineer, Cornerstone Engineering. So in the cover letter that was provided to the board, we outlined the four items and the decision of vote for major site plan approval and five items relative to the lid decision. And as an overview, basically took each item individually and provided a response. So the first item was pertaining to a retaining wall that was along the southern portion of the site. That retaining wall was constructed, and it does appear to be substantially in compliance with the design and decision. The second item was along the common lot line, and this would have been towards the easterly end of the site. There was discussion about drainage spillover. So again, I looked at the site, actually took a couple of pictures in this area, so that the board would be able to see it firsthand if they couldn't get there. There's some large outcroppings within this zone. And the area is all stabilized on our side of the project. And then on the rear, that site is under construction. I believe that's 10 Turnpike. And there is a series of, I don't know, like control structure, if you will, that I took a picture of, and a some area where there's like a temporary basin holding water. But again, nothing looks unstabilized, other than the construction limits on the adjacent site. Then the last item, excuse me, the third item on the decision was relative to lighting. A lot of this pertained to items during construction and post-construction. I just looked at the record and said there was no complaints relative to lighting to date that I was aware of, so that the lighting should be a resolved issue. But if it's an open issue, we can certainly carry it forward in the current proposal. And then the fourth item on site plan decisions were that we itemized, where we saw deviations from the as-built to the design plan. And what we found were four items. So there was identified, it's been part of a discussion item, the plantings. So these plantings were supposed to be along the easterly boundary as well as the detention basin. They were, they seem to me to have been all delivered to the site. The contractor looks as though they stockpiled them. And then they never did anything further with them. They kind of healed them in. And that's where they grew for the years that have passed. They're all very healthy plants. I took a close-up of one, and then the cluster is a general area. And I think they can all be transplanted very easily. So my suggestion was to take them and string them out along the easterly boundary, along their Edison right-of-way, because they're all shrubs that would provide good cover in foraging birds and small critters that certainly are living in that Edison right-of-way. A landscape island was installed on the easterly side of the building. That caused a bit of a shift to the east for the proposal, but we designed based upon that shift. So I personally believe it would all fit in just perfectly with what we've obviously already designed. But more importantly was, it did provide better vehicular and pedestrian safety and travel paths by moving that driveway away from the building. So that was one benefit that did occur, but it is a deviation just the same.
Peter, is that shown on the as-built?
You know what, Karina? I have those plans. If you want to, if you want to share a screen, I'll bring it up.
Just a question for after. I just want to make sure.
Okay. I noted the deviation. I mean, it, it does show it. Yes, that's your question. That is our underlying plan. So that's, it does show it. We've designed around it. Okay?
Okay. Peter, you can share your screen if you, if you.
Okay, well, I'll go through all these. And if anyone wants me to do that, I'll do that. I'll just finish up here. So concrete aprons were constructed on the north and south side of the building. And in the original design, it, you know, anticipated this was going to be a garage, but they didn't actually design for it. In looking at the original design plan, they basically had a sidewalk going across the whole front. And you had to anticipate that vehicles would go in and out of the building. So to me, that's a deviation, should have been noted. And then these aprons have bollards associated with them to protect the door corners. And there is a concrete sidewalk. So the good thing, again, is that for pedestrian and vehicular safety, those provisions have been met and addressed. And then none of these changes resulted in a stormwater impact in that the collection system is present to handle the water that's coming off. And then the last deviation that we found was that the roof drainage system, there actually was no provision for it in the design plan. But there certainly was, they picked up all the storm drains system, they pick up all the roof drains, and they did tie it in. And they just, there's an identified collection pipe now showing into the detention basin next to FE2. So that's another thing that we noted. And then on the lid, some of the decisions of the lid dovetailed with the site plan. So items one, two are identical to the responses I just gave you for those items. And then the third item was an executed O&M for construction. I don't know if the contractor executed one or not. So I couldn't answer that. But I can tell you that we did supply a 2021 inspection of the site and that we did address that O&M going forward with conservation. And again, with the board's approval of this, because CONCOM's already approved it, we would be obviously following the new program that we would construct hopefully this fall. Item four, I did note the as-built deviations that was discussed there. And what I've recommended for a way forward is that we would do a new as-built, again, with the board's approval of the plan changes that we have. And then we can give you a full engineer certification for the site. I don't like the thought of doing redundant work, but where the previous design firm didn't fulfill its obligations under the previous permit, you know, we'll have to pick that up. And that's my suggestion in item four, is that we would do that. And then item five, the, again, again, I don't know about a responsible party having been identified in the SWAP. But from my perspective, the owner is always the responsible party. That's how we filled out the annual report. And ultimately, it's their responsibility. And going forward, that's who would be named in the SWAP when we come forward, is if they, the responsible party is the owner of the property. I did provide photos for all of this, and I have the ability to bring those up. If you want to share a screen, if somebody didn't get to look at that or wants to ask a further question, hopefully you'll support the proposals for six Turnpike Road. Thank you.
Hey, Karina, where are we with Fussin' O'Neill?
Fussin' O'Neill provided a review on the second submission, which left most of the, there were like eight or nine items of which two had to be addressed. The rest were all, you know, if the planning boards decides to approve it that way, waive or condition it. So the two items were the handicap parking spaces that needed to be shown on the plan, which Peter showed at the last public hearing. I looked at those as well, and they appeared to have the right dimensions and correct numbers. There was a note that referenced the existing conditions plan that hadn't been updated on several of the sheets. Peter fixed that on this submission number four. He updated the note to reference the proper existing conditions plan that he's attached to these, these plans. And the rest were items such as, let me just tell you quickly. A new O&M plan needs to be submitted prior to, say, pre-construction. It was a question of the contact person, which you'll have to provide as part of the lid in writing, Peter. Responsible person on site and for site disturbing activity. The trees and shrubs that you mentioned to, and I think you noted on the plan to replant those if possible, to transplant those. And then if they don't take that, you would, the owner would provide in-kind plantings to replace the ones that don't survive. Just trying to see what else. So the rest of the items are kind of discretionary for the planning board. Let's check one more thing here. Parking was addressed, O&M. Change in in, there was a slight increase in volume and its minimum compared to the approved calculations that should not have an adverse impact on the site. That had to do with stormwater runoff. The CDS units as part of stormwater are comparable in providing the same levels of total suspended solids removal. However, they're not a lid principal. And I believe Dawn, at the last meeting, you had mentioned that Peter could reach out to the DPW. I spoke with Karen Galligan, and she said that if the applicant was conditioned to mitigate the lid aspect by promising a tree somewhere else in town, that she'd prefer that they ordered a tree and she would pick it up, her people would pick it up and plant it in town so that it doesn't sit at the DPW yard and get damaged. Yeah. Contact person. And then it was the question of the Conservation Commission had waived aspects of their treatment structures, which was in line. The applicant should provide options for treatment units and by cost comparison, but the Conservation Commission had waived that that condition. And then the last condition was, I mean, the last comments were regarding the as-built. And that's been onward. We've been carrying that forward throughout the whole public hearing process, because as we know, the existing conditions weren't complete when they were submitted. There was an engineer's certifying letter that was missing from the owner. So sounds, that's about it. And that's all reflected in the letter from Fussin' O'Neill dated August 12th.
Okay. Thank you. Open up to the board. Questions, comments, Mr. Mills?
I think I'm glad to see that there was progress made from last time we were met and discussed this. I definitely be in favor of the tree being purchased for the town. I don't have any questions.
Thank you, Mrs. Stein.
Good evening. I apologize for being late to the meeting. So Karina, the last Fussin' O'Neill report was dated August 12th. So a little confused about where we stand with Fussin' O'Neill. You had said that they had reviewed this, that we're, it's in front of us now.
No, they haven't reviewed that.
See, I don't actually see that letter in the Dropbox.
No, they reviewed all the way up to submission two, which brought us to.
Oh, I thought this, so this is submission four we're on now.
Yeah, three was an interim that had, and maybe, Peter, you can explain, but the submission three had some minor changes to the plans. And I think there was a continuation in between as well, where Peter presented some of the things he was going to change, but because the submission was too close to the public hearing timeframe, that he just explained some of the changes. And in the interim prior to this meeting, Peter made additional changes to the plans, which became submission four. So that's a question on the table. Once the plans, maybe even in this condition, in this status, they could go back to Fussin' O'Neill for a final review. But often, I know, and it may not be the case here, but when you only have eight comments left and two of them were addressed and six were recommended, you know, the planning board decided at their discretion if it's okay with them or not, or include a condition in the decision.
Well, so the only thing that concerns me, though, is it's really not just those items. There's a whole bunch of stuff regarding the as-built.
Yes, there is now. Right.
So that's, that's opened up, that's really opened up a big can of worms. But I hope that, is Fussin' O'Neill going to participate in terms of reviewing these, these redline items in, in the context of the as-built?
They can if the planning board wants me to engage them to do another review. If the planning board is not comfortable with the responses or the comments being addressed in the last review letter, if they're not carried forward enough, or any, there's still lingering questions on some of these responses, we can provide this submission to Fussin' O'Neill.
Well, this is a lot of stuff. And like, here's an example. Shields may be, shall be placed on lights that are but the property lines. An engineering design consultant says they have no knowledge as to if any notifications regarding lighting matters were ever completed. I mean, that, if that's how this has been structured, we absolutely, in my opinion, need a consultant, because I don't have time or the bandwidth to go through these items piece by piece and find out and verify the stuff and see where we really stand on this. And this is, this is some pretty, I can't recall a situation quite like this, where we've been this far off from the as-built or non-existent as-built, really, and trying to bring a property into compliance and do a a change on the site plan all in one shot. Yeah. I totally support Fussin' O'Neill reviewing the letter dated September 20th with the engineering design consultants responses and read. And I really feel like any other comments by me would be premature at this point. Thank you.
All right, just to respond, Jesse, a couple of things, real quick, that we do have a stamped as-built. But as you indicate, it's not fully vetted by an engineering consultant. But it is, there is a stamped as-built. And then the second thing I wanted to just point out, you may recall that this property owner did come before the planning board for a complaint about the lights a couple of years ago, which he, if I recall correctly, he addressed those issues with the lights. And I think that that had been settled at that time. But that is true, no excuse that it's not addressed in this as far as what that outcome was, if the owner has knowledge of that.
So I thought I was done, but I just have to throw it out there. You know, sometimes the planning board takes some criticism in this town for the length of time it takes to get a project through the approval process. But yet, to me, this is an example of the planning board just doing, we're just doing the fair and basic review. And here, the process is being elongated and not necessarily by the current proponent, who's with the current applicant. But the current applicant is having to deal with the shortcomings of the, of the, the previous project management. So hopefully, my little extra comment resonates with somebody out there who thinks we're not doing our job. We're doing our job as the planning board. And now I'm done. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mrs. Luttrell.
Thank you. Peter, could you explain to me about the the altered limits of the sidewalk under four C and what that means? Like, how do you get from the handicap spaces into the building?
Okay, so the original proposal did have the handicap spaces located in that position. You'd have to travel through the travel aisle. But the, the doorways, there's, there's a doorway, left doorway, right. And they have a handicapped access point where it's flush at grade to get into the building.
Okay, from back there?
Yes, yes. And then the alteration on the north and south side is basically that, you know, it kind of showed like a sidewalk going across the entire building front and didn't anticipate that a vehicle would travel through the building. But, you know, we all knew that's what they were building. They just didn't draw it that way.
Oh, okay.
So that's the only thing I noted was that there's definitely a deviation here. But it's not one that I wouldn't, if I was in your position, I would have anticipated that deviation occurring.
Okay, thank you. And are the lights shielded?
I believe every light was the ones that were specified on the plan. Again, we went the design engineers that much. I could at least bet was I looked at the original plan and looked at what they purchased and installed. And I found, you know, I asked if there was any issues, and Karina had said that there was at one point, and it had more to do with interior lights and not the exterior lights. And that's what they had remedied. So from my perspective, you know, for the, with due respect, Mr. Stein, for those three intervening years, four years, no one has complained about lighting at the site. So from my perspective, I couldn't, I can't say more than what I know. What I know is the lights are there. They do appear to all be according to what was proposed. There are no issues on the table regarding lights. And it would have been a lot easier if the previous engineer had just certified like they're supposed to, but they're apparently not going to do that. So we're stuck in this, you know, halfway between, you know, there and here. And the way forward I had suggested to you was that we could condition the current plan on providing you with a full itemized review, which we'll do with the new work. And then I can take every one of those details and go through every one of them. It's just very hard for me to do that when my scope of work is on the small parking lot. So I apologize, but that's the circumstances I find myself in at the moment. And I did my best with what I had to work with. So, thank you.
And then the, the last thing, or the second to last thing, thank you for the caliper that's on the plans, so we don't get a three-inch tree. And it does say that any existing tree and shrub that can be properly uprooted shall be transplanted. But it doesn't say that otherwise the tree will be replaced or the shrub will be replaced. If it can't be transplanted.
Right, that was a condition Karina had asked. And I, and I, you know, I do believe every one of those, there's a lot of winter berry that's on the Edison property. Those can easily be transplanted. They're a very hardy shrub, and they're all in good condition. And we're in the right time of year to do that. So I'm confident with that. The ones that are in the detention basin, they're shown on the plan. There's like a half a dozen of them. And I'm still willing to transplant all of them. It's not going to be that hard. So I'm fine with that. If they, if those, we're going to have them all, if you want, I'll document each one. And if it doesn't, you know, pass through the next growing season, we'll replace it.
Okay. And my last question is, I'm not an engineer, so I'd ask the engineers if Peter's proposal for the detailed as-built moving forward is a, is a good remedy for this situation.
I intended to speak to that in a certain way at the end, so.
Okay, I'm all done then.
Okay, Mrs. O'Leary.
Thank you, Chairman Morris. Hi, Peter. So my only question, I'm going to go back to the lower impact development. And I think the original proposal and the feedback from Fussin' O'Neill, and I know Proposal and the feedback from Fussin O'Neil, and I know that our bylaw states a lid proposal in a certain way technically. You've you've countered to say this is the, you know, this is what we're gonna do. Is are you still sticking with this kind of second solution? Are you going to attempt to try and meet the the lid requirements as we had? Asked for um that, you know, I'm referring to section five of the Fussin O'Neil. Letter. It's just the you're talking about the lid principles within the proposal. And then you talk about the underground detention galley system and the CDS units. And again, I'm not an engineer, but I am just worried about lower impact development and ensuring that we do the right thing in town. So um can you just let me know how we're you're you're planning to mitigate that?
Yeah, I I mean, under under many circumstances, you know, lid would be more of a passover, letting the kind of the natural environment try to assist you with the treatment of the stormwater. In in the case of this project, because it's already built. Um I have to implement a system inside of those existing drain networks that are there at the site, and there are two separate ones that come into the tension basin. Um so that's where the CDS units come in uh for treatment. And so instead of using a passive treatment system, we're gonna use a mechanical treatment system. But you know, the good thing about that is that every calendar year that has to be cleaned, whereas in a passive system, you just it just stays there. No one does anything about it until it. Goes into failure and then they respond. So you can you can hear from my perspective that sometimes some of these live principles are only as good as the party behind them that's operating. Um so that's up to the point where the water gets into the system. Then, when the water left the system, if Route nine hadn't been, you know, our close connection, we could have probably done some sort of open channel, which would have then brought back a lid principle again. But because we have to hard pipe this to discharge, I can't bring back a lid principle because it's already infrastructure that's there. And then. The highway department at the state level is not going to allow me to have open channel flow going into their layout. So so that's where we couldn't achieve a lid principle, but we we've implemented, I think, what is a good program. And then lastly, on 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 infiltration. We did not take credit for the infiltration of stormwater in the site, but 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 I will tell you, we are definitely infiltrating stormwater. We didn't take credit for a volume reduction. In our calculations because we didn't want to make the system smaller, but I can assure you that we, again, are infiltrating stormwater and we will have. A lower volume of discharge into the highway, excuse me, the highway system. And again, that's you can see that in the evidence that we got back from the state because they all agree, sure, yeah, do this. This is a good improvement. Um so I I'd say at the end of the day, I think we are still observing lid principles with this proposal. We're just not doing those techniques that are the passive techniques that the bylaw, the way it's written. Is looking for you to do because our project's already here. So I'm not I'm not gonna sugarcoat it. I'm not gonna say something that's not right. Um I'm giving you the facts. I do believe that we are. Meeting lid principles and that we have an equally a good lid proposal than the previous plan. But when it comes to the way the bylaw is drafted, it won't let me take credit for any of those things that I'm doing, unfortunately. And that's the that's the the quandary. Um so what what I.
Peter, did you incorporate the roof drains into the new design?
Did I did I did. Um so so all the things that we're supposed to do are done. I mean, we are infiltrating all that stormwater. The the way the lint principles could could come back is that we take this whole parking lot instead of draining it into a closed system, we would then put. Like like a filter strip around the whole edge of the parking lot. I I just think that's a terrible design feature. I wouldn't want to do that at this site. But if if that's what you insisted upon, that would be the one lid principle that I could return with. And and be able to say to you, you know, forthright that I've complied with your right local regulation, but I don't think it's a very good way to do it. So again, I look at the whole picture at the beginning of the day, what does this site look like and at the end of the day, what this site looks like. And I will tell you that we will let better stormwater. Go through this site and leave the site in the current proposal.
Thank you, Peter. I appreciate that. Um so I think that from that perspective, um. My suggestion would be like that there would be, you had said that because it's a mechanical process versus kind of a natural process. Yeah, I would want to have some conditions around that to ensure that that is done annually by the property owners. I mean, obviously, we've had quite a bit go wrong on this original property owners. And then I would also, I would um support Jesse's perspective of of more specifically, though, when an O and M plan was submitted. For the Concom and when that's completed, that Fussin O'Neil review that. Um and I think that should be kind of the supplemental condition that we consider um in this process. That's all I had, Chairman Morse.
And I will tell you that our decision from conservation requires just what you stated, and then we know we are mandated to do an annual report. Again, I don't know why there was a disconnect from the previous uh engineer, uh but they they didn't follow through with that. We have in twenty twenty one, and I can assure you that going forward in twenty twenty two, we'll do the same thing. So, thank you.
Thank you.
This is um I happen to agree with Peter relative to lid, plus he's gonna give the town a tree. We we had suggested offsite, some type of offsite. Help with the environment, and so the town's gonna get a. A hardwood uh tree. And the details of that will be worked out between the town planner and and the proponent. What I suggest, and this goes back to Mr. Stein, who, in my opinion tonight. Really captured it. There's a list and and Karina went through it. There's a list of things that are outstanding. There's nothing we can do about the current as built, which we should probably just pretend that it doesn't exist. And rely on the current uh proponent to produce an as-built drawing that reflects the whole site. I also suggest um some of these other items like the shields and other things that Karina listed. And what we do is we would put, I would suggest that we would get a five to um. Probably seven thousand dollar uh cash bond, cash uh. Amount submitted to the town. And and held by us, held by the town until we get all of these things that are. Uh promised to us. We've just heard Peter's last sentence, I believe, was I assure I assure you that I will get these things. Well, the history of this site. Is such that uh. We should have some if if that. If if those things continue to be outstanding, we would have to draw a line and say, all right, we're gonna take the money, the cash that you have. Bonded uh the town and we'll we'll hire the consultant to go out there and do it. We don't want to do that, but there's gonna be an incentive and a guarantee that it's gonna get done. And so that's my suggestion that um we get at least five thousand and no more than ten thousand cash. Toward these items that would be held by the town until they're they're all fixed, all finished up. The Fussin O'Neil uh review. These final items, I agree that we should have that done also. We have a an extension letter signed by Mr. Bemis that would uh continue the public hearing. To October eighteenth and the uh uh decision period of uh extended to. October twenty second. I would suggest that between now and October eighteenth. That uh Mr. Bemis and whoever else is on his team work with the town planner. For uh written conditions that the board could vote on on the eighteenth. Uh along with accepting the cash uh amount uh to be held to assure that these things are done. Earlier, Mr. Bemis stated that he was hoping to get this project built this this construction period, and I would think that. With the cash uh amount. There'd be a a more of a comfort level for the town of South Pro that we would uh. Be trusting to get these things at the same time that we would um hopefully. Approve this modification with conditions on October eighteenth and let them start start the work uh this construction period. It's not a huge project, but um. It is somewhat surgical at that site. So that's my suggestion and the board uh and town planner. And the proponent. Uh should all be working toward uh a vote to uh approve the modification with conditions. On October eighteenth. Open it up to the public. Any questions or comments? Back to you, Peter. What I'm proposing.
So that 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 can work. I'll um I'll just line everything up anticipating that we can get this done in the interim and I'm um. I'm sorry for the circumstances we all find ourselves in, but there's only so much that I could do and you folks could do, and I think that's a way forward. So, thank you.
Uh anymore from the board?
To Morse, uh. I just want to make sure that you and I are on the same page, that we're asking Fussin O'Neil to go through each of these points. With with the the. The Mr. Bemis a red line response, such as the shields on the lights as just one example.
Yeah, well, I I don't I don't know if it's necessary for them to do that between now and October eighteenth. Especially since between now and then, the board would not have voted to either uh grant the modification or not. But because we're gonna have uh funding. Real money in case the proponent fails to perform, then we would still wind up with a proper. Accurate as-built. Of the conditions that are physically there at the site. And if the shields are required and they're not there, then. We'll ask the owner to put the shields in. They fail to do that, there'll be enough money. In our uh bond to get it done. So between now and between now and the eighteenth, I would I would suggest if uh and Karina, you can. Correct me, but as relative to the to what's there now, we shouldn't um. I guess we shouldn't really spend a lot of time or effort on that until. The final uh till Mr. Bemis says, okay, the underground system is in, it's complete, I've I've done everything. Modification that you approved, it's done, all the conditions are satisfied. Then we call in Fussin O'Neil to verify.
Right, what would happen is they would provide, so so if um this application gets approved with conditions. On the eighteenth and a bond is provided um between five and ten thousand dollars to cover the cost of an as-built. And ensure that we get an updated O and M plan. That um once the modification is approved and can appeal period lapses and construction can take place. At the time when construction is done, um the engineer would provide an as-built, which would then. Go to Fussin O'Neil for complete review, which would require an onsite inspection. Um as well as, um you know, a a report back to us and the proponent pays for that review. Of the as-built. The other option is also, well, in addition to that, um we could engage Fussin O'Neil um to. Provide maybe two or three inspections during construction. Which we had discussed previously uh when we talked about site plant compliance uh for the future. Um so we could. Ask Fussin O'Neil to provide us with an estimate of uh how many inspections and what it would cost, and then the applicant would need to provide that in order to. Ensure that construction is completed to plan. Ending with an as-built in um review as well. And once the as-built is complete and accepted. By Fussin O'Neil to the tech and the planning board reviewed by Fussin O'Neil. Approved by the planning board, then they would request a bond release.
And that would be an agenda item at a future meeting.
Right, similar what we do with um subdivisions. If I have that right, Don, is that?
Yes, you do. Yes, I I knew you'd put some polish on what I was saying. Yes. All set, Peter?
Yeah, I provided you with the continuation. If we couldn't do it do it tonight, um so we'll do it on the eighteen. Sounds like a plan. Thank you.
So in the interim, Don, I will ask um I I I can ask Fussin O'Neil to provide me an estimate for um. Uh construction inspection, maybe attend the pre-construction somewhere halfway when construction's complete and then final inspection for the as-built. Something along that line.
Yep.
Okay.
And we don't want to see the uh I I I want the amount uh and it's cash. It's not a it's not a um.
Performance bond. It's not a it's not an insurance bond.
No, it's it's money in the bank in an account that the town has full access to, real money.
Right, we would expect a check for that amount of the bond that's required, which gets deposited into um an escrow account.
And I would rely, I think, on you, Karina, and Peter and whoever else is on Peter's team to agree on an amount. And then have that money submitted and and not on October seventeenth, a lot sooner than that. If we don't see the see a clear pathway to the eighteenth, it's gonna wind up getting continued again, which, as Mr. Stein picked up on, this is just just dragging out forever. But we're close. We're on the threshold. We're inside the five yard line. Let's let's get it done. We got a we got a path forward. All set, everybody? So we need uh a uh motion to uh grant the um request. To extend the approval period to October twenty second.
So moved. Second?
Motion's been made in second and any discussion. Hearing that all in favor, Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes.
Latrell, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
And now we would need a motion to continue this public hearing to October eighteenth at seven oh five P M.
I move second.
Motion's been made in second and any discussion. Hearing that all in favor, Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes.
Latrell, yes. Houlihan, yes.
Okay, so I will sign this form and get it to Karina tomorrow.
And Don, just to be clear, I'm gonna submit submission number four to Fussin O'Neil for review.
Yep.
Okay.
Shouldn't be shouldn't be much. All set, everyone? We'll move on to the next agenda item. Thank you, Peter. Which is. Uh continued public hearing, proposed downtown district bylaws, zoning map and design guidelines. This uh public hearing is continued. From July nineteenth, August sixteenth, September thirteenth. September twentieth, we'll ask the town planner to update uh us on what's happened in the last week. And uh Sarah to. Either ask someone or tell us who from the E D C and the Board of Selectmen might be uh in the room. Arena first.
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead. Go ahead, Sarah.
Just gonna say who is in the room, that's all.
Oh, okay.
So we do have uh Sam Stivers here, uh Ms. Elise Brascio is here. And that's everybody I see from the. Boards at this moment.
Did you say anyone from the E D C?
I don't see. Anyone from the E D C. At the moment, um if anyone's out there from the E D C, could you raise your hand? In the attendee list, because sometimes just just phone numbers that we can't tell. Right, we do have one phone number. So I don't see any hands, do you, Sarah?
I don't.
Okay. Would you like me to give an update, Don?
Yeah, it's it's just uh. It it's. Yeah, I I. I'm I'm hoping that someone from the E D C uh tunes in, but we'll press on. Yes, please, please uh update us.
Okay, so on September 20th, the planning board added a public hearing date specifically to discuss the downtown district bylaw that's proposed in the three components, which is the draft bylaw language itself, the zoning map that would reflect this new downtown district, and then also the design guidelines promulgated by the planning board to, to work for projects in the downtown district. So the planning board provided several recommendations and edits to the documents and voted on them. And the following day, we provided those to the Board of Selectmen for their meeting on the 21st. At which that the Board of Selectmen, it's my understanding, also approved those changes. So, let's see here. I received an email from Lisa Brascio the next day, giving me an update that those documents, the proposed bylaw with the edits from the planning board, the zoning map, which was a reflection of mock-up number two, which excluded all the split lots and the railroad parcel, and the edits to the design guidelines. Well, the first to the map and the bylaw were approved by the Board of Selectmen, the planning board approves the design guidelines. Then when I got in this morning, I asked Mark Purple what he needed for print for the warrant because I know he likes to send them to town council for review ahead of time. So I, he said he needed the bylaw. So I updated, I didn't update, I fixed the bylaw and incorporated all the changes that the planning board wanted and provided him that with the zoning map and also the design guidelines with all the edits hard inserted so that he would have those to pass on to town council for review and in time for printing on the warrant. Then today, I also received a letter which I passed on to the Board, to the planning board from the EDC indicating that they were not in agreement with the planning board edits. I believe they met on last Thursday evening to discuss the meeting that the planning board had on the 20th and the changes that the planning board had recommended. I also received an email with a request to read into public record the EDC, from the EDC, what they thought about the recommendations, which I also provided to the planning board members. And that brings us here to this evening. I just want to point out that to just read, you know, make people understand that the special town meeting is scheduled for November 1st and the Board of Selectmen are going to sign the warrant by October 5th, I thought it was, in order for it to go to print so that it can be published in time for the special town meeting. So that brings us here. So we do have a couple of, a letter and an email, and then also I received some questions from Bonnie Faniff regarding specifics about a property in the Business Village District that's not in the downtown area. And a couple of questions related to design guidelines, which I'll respond to wanting an email tomorrow, once I research and find some answers for her on that pretty specific question. That's it.
So the board has today received the letter from the Economic Development Committee dated September 27th. And it's three, three plus pages. Everyone's seen that, all the board members seen that. And then we got the email where they asked us to read the following statement, which is from the letter. And
Right, it's an excerpt and I received them around lunchtime or so, so I didn't have a chance to post them anywhere.
But they'll be posted tomorrow?
I can, yes.
Yeah, it's important, although I think maybe we'll ask if Lisa is there, if the selectman posted it so that if anyone's tuning in tonight, they can, they can go look at it. Are you there, Lisa? Adam, Chair?
Lisa?
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Awesome. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
So we have not posted it yet. Our intent is to put it in our packet for our 10-5 meeting. But my understanding is when I look tonight, it is on the EDC's website under the downtown district. So if anyone wants to go and look, it, it is currently posted online there. Don, if I can veer for just one second, I want to thank Karina again for all of the tremendous work she put into getting the edited documents and the map to the Board of Selectmen for our meeting the next night. I can't tell you how much it was appreciated and we know how much time and effort that it took to do that. So I just wanted to give Karina a huge kudos from the Board of Selectmen on that. And also
Thank you.
You're welcome, Karina. And also just to thank the planning board again for having the extra meeting. You know, it's not always easy to do in between. So that being said, Mr. Chairman, back to you.
So the planning board doesn't get paid, but is there anything in the selectmen's budget that could be reflected on to your gratitude to the town planner?
Well, I, I personally paid her a visit the next day, so I will just leave it at that.
She did.
And showed her my gratitude. So, yes, it was, it was very much appreciated, Don.
Okay.
Your gratitude was greatly appreciated, Lisa. Thank you.
You're welcome.
It's a good team.
Yep.
Is, let's check again. Is there anyone here from the EDC?
No, I, I do not see any members of the EDC.
I printed this thing, this letter. I think it's, it's okay to read the whole letter. If we're going to read the email excerpt, we might as well just read the whole letter. Is there someone other than myself that's willing to read it? I, I can, the way I printed it, I could barely see it.
I can read it if you like, or Sarah, if you'd like. No, sorry, you might not have it printed because you're
I don't have it printed, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go, go ahead, Karina, please. Thank you.
So I'll be reading
Somebody from, some, someone from the EDC would read it, but we'll see. Yep.
Okay. So you want, just to be clear, you want me to read the letter, not the excerpt in the email?
Well.
The full letter that was came first.
Yeah, why, why not? I mean, if the email is only part of it, it's a good part of it, but just read the whole letter.
Okay. So this is from the Town of Southborough Economic Development Committee dated September 27th, 2021 to the Board of Selectmen and Planning Board. In an effort to make progress on what residents of Southborough desire in Southborough's downtown, see 2017 survey results here, and there's a link, as well as implement recommendations from the 2008 master plan, the Economic Development Committee identified hurdles to surpass so that desirable economic investments in downtown Southborough could be achieved. The downtown initiative was born and the project aimed to focus on the following areas. Zoning update to, to support and promote strategic mixed-use development, to encourage certain uses by allowing them by right, wastewater solutions, investment opportunities, beautification, connectivity and funding options. The EDC is pleased that the Board of Selectmen agreed to sponsor the proposed downtown district zoning article and that it will be presented at a special fall town meeting on November 1st, 2021. The EDC also thanks the planning board for conducting public hearings and listening to feedback from our residents. We acknowledged other town boards, committees and departments whose input was invaluable in producing a draft of the downtown district bylaw. Insert of the downtown district bylaw, I mean intent, sorry, intent of the downtown district bylaw, new paragraph. Bullets. Revitalize Southborough's historic downtown district to allow for mixed-use development, e.g. residential and commercial retail in the same building. To update the permitted uses to allow some desirable uses by right, meaning certain identified uses are pre-approved and don't need an additional use permit. Next section, 2021 timeline. The Economic Development Committee Board of Select, the Economic Development Committee Board of Selectmen and Planning Board held multiple joint meetings where the draft downtown district zoning bylaw was discussed and issues were resolved. In April of 2021, the planning board reviewed version 8.1 of the downtown district bylaw and indicated 10 outstanding issues and concerns. In a following joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen, Planning Board and Legal Counsel Adam Costa, all items were addressed and resolved. The result of this work produced version nine of the draft downtown district zoning bylaw. The final version nine downtown district bylaw, existing zoning map and draft design guidelines were approved and sent to the planning board as voted by the Board of Selectmen and the EDC at their joint meeting on June 22nd, 2021. After several public hearings, the planning board held a special meeting on September 20th, 2021 to discuss the downtown district bylaw, zoning map and draft design guidelines. The following new changes were made, among others. Number one, a 40% restriction to residential use in mixed-use developments. Number two, reduce the number of apartments allowed in mixed-use developments to three from eight. Number three, to reduce the number of dwelling units in multifamily dwelling to a maximum of 10, parentheses from 12, by special permit. Number four, reduce the maximum floor area ratio by right to 0.30 from 0.35. Five, reduce the maximum height to 35 feet from 40 feet. Remove minimum, number six, remove minimum and maximum ground floor height restrictions. And number seven there at the bottom of the screen, exclude all split lot and CSX property from the downtown district zoning map. The Board of Selectmen accepted all planning board proposed changes to the bylaw as well as the planning board proposed zoning map edits at their meeting of September 21st, 2021. The Board of Selectmen voted to publish the downtown district warrant article with the above-mentioned planning board recommendations by October 5th, 2021, in preparation of the November 1st, 2021 special town meeting. Next section, Economic Development Committee Concerns. The Economic Development Committee is not in agreement with several of the recent changes made to the proposed downtown district bylaw for the following main reasons. The latest recommendations submitted by the planning board result in a more restrictive floor area ratio for the downtown district than what is currently permitted in the Business Village District. Secondly, the latest proposal fails to follow the original intent of the revisions to the bylaw as outlined in the 2008 master plan. The changes made are unlikely to encourage investments in downtown. The third bullet, development standards that were previously agreed upon through joint meetings and recommended by the professional consultants were changed without discussion. The EDC is eager to support a revised bylaw for the downtown district for Board of Selectmen and Planning Board support. However, the committee is unable to accept changes that add further restrictions on potential development, defeat the original intent and make any future viable development unlikely or more restrictive. The EDC is willing to discuss and compromise further, but is of the, but it is of the opinion that a workable, sensible bylaw should be presented. The committee urges the Board of Selectmen to reconsider the latest changes regarding the following items and present, present the best possible bylaw for Southborough at town meeting. Bullet items read, number one, the restriction of mixed use to require that residential units not comprise more than 40% of a building makes no sense and negates the original intent of adding by right mixed use. The sharp reduction in the number of residential units permitted in a mixed-use development from eight units to three units is overly restrictive, undermines the intent of encouraging mixed-use development and was proposed arbitrarily with almost no discussion or reasoning. Number three, the reduction of the floor area ratio from 0.35 to 0.30 is one, contrary to months of agreed upon discussion, two, against the recommendation of the zoning and planning experts hired by the town, and three, significantly lower than the current floor area ratio permitted in the downtown Business Village District, which is currently 0.50 for commercial buildings, parentheses, see schedule of dimensional regulations. Going back to the original purpose of the downtown initiative, zoning changes to the downtown are one, a vital part of sustainable and healthy economic ecosystem for the town. Two, a mandate of the 2008 master plan as well as multiple subsequent studies and plans. These studies represent tens of thousands of dollars in consulting and expert costs to demonstrate the necessity of zoning updates to include by right mixed use and other by right uses. Number three, desired by a significant majority of the town's residents, as evidenced by multiple surveys. The three particular changes referenced above were proposed by the planning board at the 11th hour and adopted by the Board of Selectmen unanimously with almost no discussion. These added changes undermine the purpose of two years of consistent and diligent work to make small-scale but actionable modifications to the zoning code for downtown. All in an effort to encourage future investments in amenities, diversity in housing and more, and a more vibrant downtown to serve as the heart of our community. It is, it is our grave concern that our efforts will have been in vain if these changes are upheld. We sincerely hope you will consider and open these items up for further discussion before the warrant is printed. Sincerely, Economic Development Committee. R. Anderson, Chair, A. Belnyak, Vice Chair, J. Connolly, J. Wood, C. Robbins, M. Morehead and M. Berger. That's the letter.
Thank, thank you for reading that. Guess I'll open it up to the board for your reaction and opinion relative to any future, future actions by the planning board. I know that we had talked before about leaving the public hearing open right, right up until November 1st. And I think we still should do that. I'll open it up to the board for you know, questions, comments and maybe recommendations on what we should do next, if anything. Mr. Mills?
Um, I, I think the only thing I wanted to point out was, I think bullet number two is incorrect. We reduced the number of by right apartments from eight down to three. There wasn't, I mean, someone could still, with a permit, get up to greater than three mixed-use apartments or units. But other than that, I agree, Mr. Morris, we keep the public hearing open. And see where it goes from there.
Mr. Stein?
So I think my, and this is just my one opinion, one board member. I think that what we've come up with stands a better chance of passing a town meeting because it's a little bit more in line with the aesthetics of the, of the town, a little bit more preservationist than the original draft of the of the changes for the, for the district. So I understand the point of view of the EDC to advocate for, you know, more profound changes. But I don't necessarily agree, in my opinion, that this is, you know, de minimis in, in the terms of the change. There are changes and allowances in this district that, that do allow development opportunities that are not available in other parts of Southborough. So I think that while I appreciate the point of view of the EDC and those like-minded individuals who would revert back to the, to draft before, I don't think we should. I think we should continue with what we have. And I'm also in agreement on keeping the public hearing open. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Latrell?
Uh, well said, Mr. Stein. I think it's a shame, we've come a long way, the planning board and the Board of Selectmen are in agreement to bring this bylaw forward. And just to be clear, we have public hearings to hear input from the public and to make adjustments to, or suggest adjustments to the bylaw based on that public input. So the contention that changes were made So the contention that changes were made at the eleventh hour and that there was a final document isn't true. What's the point of a public hearing if you have a final document that you're not going to make any adjustments on? And I think it's a shame because to me, this does meet the intent of the project to add mixed use by right. And the changes made are more in line with the small-scale New England village as opposed to a urban downtown. This adds mixed use by right, which we didn't previously have. It brings most of the downtown properties in compliance with the bylaw by reducing the minimum lot size by fifty percent. It allows multifamily housing outside of an over fifty-five or major residential development, which is not allowed anywhere else in town. It updates the uses. Uh, it creates an avenue for additional affordable housing. And it, and it allows residential density that we don't see anywhere else in town. So I, I think it was a, a good bylaw, one that had a strong chance of uh, passing it town meeting, and it was one that I could get behind, which I, the, the previous ones I had issues with. That's, that's what I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Mrs. Houlihan.
So I'll echo, um, miss my fellow board members, Mr. Stein, well said, Mrs. Luttrell. I, um, I really enjoyed being part of the process, although it was somewhat painstaking and challenging going line by line. I really thought that the planning board came to some nice new language around, um, what, not new, but, um, balanced across our board that we felt would be appropriate. And again, as an elected board, I think we represent the, the citizens of Southborough. We approached it as a two-scale bylaw and to what Mrs. Luttrell just said, it was one that I felt we could get behind. And I do think there are so many new by right uses that are now available that weren't available prior to, um, to this. And I also think it, it does a nice job to kind of get some of those properties that were a little funky on, um, lattice guama and Foley, um, in, in line. So I think it's, you know, I really support the methodology, the process. And I'm, you know, I'm sorry that EDC feels that it's, um, all their efforts were in vain. I think what we're putting forward is a really nice collaborative piece of work. And I'm, I was thrilled to hear that the Board of Selectmen supported our recommendations. So I am one hundred percent, um, open to keeping the, the public meeting open. And, um, I am not willing to make any changes uh, to the, the written bylaw as is unless we hear from other neighbors. Thank you, Chairman Morris.
Thank you. Yeah, I, uh, I know that, you know, there's some of these bullets they've talked about, uh, it's true what, uh, Andrew said about the reducing the number of apartments. And it's really the, the number of by right apartments. And I agree with Mrs. Luttrell where those things that this accomplishes or will accomplish are you know, they're quite different, uh, than what we have now. The whole driver of this, I thought, was mixed use. And now this is going to be allowed. And maybe I missed it. But I know I heard people during the public hearing who were concerned about the, um, number of housing units that this would generate or could generate. But I don't remember, and, and so people were, were concerned about that and, and thought it should be toned back a little bit. But I don't remember anybody saying anything about this will, these changes will result in an enormous amount of economic development, uh, that, that, that this will bring way too much business or so it seemed like, uh, at least from my perspective, we, it was leaning more toward residential and less toward economic development. And so the, the, the changes that were made, recommended by the planning board went more toward the, uh, reducing the, the, the residential piece and, um, opening up the, uh, the economic piece, at least in specific ways and, and in general. So I'm, I'm encouraged, uh, and grateful to the, uh, EDC for this, this letter before our meeting tonight. And especially the part about where it says, the EDC is eager to support a revised bylaw for the downtown district with POS and planning board support. And then it says, however, the committee is unable to accept changes that add further restrictions on potential development. Defeat the original intent, which I'd like to hear how, what we're proposing defeats the original intent. And make any further viable development unlikely or more restrictive. And then they say, the EDC is willing to discuss and compromise further. But is of the opinion that a workable sensible bylaw should be, uh, presented. So the door is still open for, uh, additional suggestions on, uh, you know, some changes that would hopefully, uh, be acceptable by all three group, groups, the Selectmen, EDC, and the Planning Board. And, uh, we heard from the Planning Board members a few minutes ago that we, we all want to keep the public hearing open. And I for one, um, am encouraged that the, uh, there's a willingness to zero in on some of these areas that, um, may be able to be adjusted and that we can all live with. I have a question, um, and if there's no one here from the, even if there is someone here from the EDC, don't expect them an answer right away, but if this goes forward as it is, my understanding from what I'm, I'm hearing from the planning board members is that all five of us would vote in favor at the town meeting for this warrant article. And based on the vote of the Selectmen, I don't want to put words in their mouth, that hopefully all five members of the Board of Selectmen would stand up or raise their hand and say that they were in favor of this zoning amendment. So my question is to the EDC. If you, if you don't like it, does that mean that you're actually going, going to stand up, raise your hand and say that you, you won't vote for this, that you're voting against it as it is? Um, and that's important because the people see that or if they know that ahead of time, they're going to throw their hands up and say, you know, this, this is, this needs more work. Motion to continue, uh, to suspend the, the article and, and move on. Definitely postpone it. And all this work will be down the drain for this year. Doesn't mean we wouldn't be able to keep working on it and getting it a little try at it for the people. So I'd like to know that if, um, the EDC at this point would actually stand up and say that they're against this. That this, that by passing this essentially is worse than what we have now. I, I, I'd like to hear that. Hear, hear their position on that. So I think the public would, would, would be also. Why don't we open it up, uh, go back to the Board of Selectmen? Lisa, was it Sam also here?
Yes. Lisa?
Hi, thank you. So, um, again, the board took a position, um, at our last meeting that we would be in support of this being printed in the draft warrant. We have not responded, either done, we haven't met, obviously, to discuss the, the email and what was presented to us today. I do plan on having it on our agenda on the fifth when we are actually, um, signing the warrant. So, um, I can speak as, um, only one member of the Board of Selectmen, but I'm still supportive of the vote that I took. Again, I'm only speaking for myself. So until the, until the fifth, when the board actually has a, another option to discuss this, I, I can't speak to any changes they may or may not make.
Or, or the, the Board of Selectmen's willingness to, uh, you know, continue to bring the, the, this warrant article forward and let the people vote on it.
No.
Or to pull it.
Yes, I agree, Don. I think it's, it's a bigger discussion on the fifth as to, you know, what position we're actually going to take, if we're going to, you know, continue to move forward. If, if the board has, um, you know, wants to hold off on it based on the, um, I guess, the un-collaborativeness that we have right now and, you know, uh, take another stab at what we want to do. So I mean, all options at this point are on the table, but as of today, you know, the board was in support of the changes that the, uh, signing board had made.
Thank you. Any, any, uh, anyone Lisa right now or Sam? Open it up to the public.
There are no hands raised.
Any hands raised at the moment?
There's a public, uh, person.
Yes, I do see, uh, Mr.
Mr. Hokinson is, has his hand raised on.
Sure. You're on, Ray.
Can you unmute him, Sarah, or does he have to do that himself?
Uh, he should be able to unmute.
I think he's having trouble.
I'm asked to unmute.
There you go.
That working again?
Yep, we can hear you now.
Okay, it was, I don't know what happened. Uh, like I was saying, this is Ray Hokinson, Ten Main Street. I sort of agree with, well, I don't sort of agree, I agree with the summary from many of the people on the planning board. This was, you know, many people in the, in the downtown district were very active with the EDC through, uh, their early engagements on proposals for the downtown business district. And then they launched off into the zoning effort. And this was the first time anybody really had an opportunity to reflect or comment on their zoning proposals. So we all had our inputs on, you know, our concerns, and I think the planning board incorporated most of those concerns very well. And I think most of the people, you, I expect that there are much fewer people in attendance from the Village District uh, listening to this meeting because we saw what we heard from the last meeting and from the Selectmen's meeting. And I think we were most, you know, on board with the summaries, and this was our first opportunities to reflect and comment back on their proposals. I had the previous experience with their consultant, listening to the consultant because it was the same consultant that was involved in Zach. And my, I mean, she's maybe very competent in zoning issues. She's not necessarily reflective of the views of the people of Southborough. Maybe pro-business, but you know, the people of Southborough have to speak as well. And I do think that the, uh, the, the planning board and what you've summarized and what you just stated today was reflective of the fact that you did listen to the community. And I support actually what the Selectmen said and the planning board said in your feedback. And like you said, I think it's much more likely to pass. I'm not a hundred percent sure it'll pass, but is much more likely to pass right now. My only other comment, I don't like three-story buildings. That's my one gripe remaining. And I, the only, when people start saying, oh, the, the, whatever it is, the FAR, the floor area ratio makes the three-story building ugly. Good, because it shouldn't. It, it's inappropriate for the town. That's my final comment, but, uh, I support what you summarized and, and forwarded on to the Selectmen and that they voted for it. So I encourage that. I think it's more likely to pass in town meeting. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else?
I do not see any other hands raised.
So we're going to have a motion to continue the public hearing to October eighteenth. Is there any, uh, suggestion from the board to do something between now and October eighteenth? Other than, I guess, express our willingness to have this, have, uh, further discussions with someone from the EDC and the town planner or one or two members of the planning board. Go ahead, Mimi.
So I watched the, um, EDC meeting, the Friday meeting, and it, it seems to me that there's not consensus on the EDC with what they're, what changes they're actually looking for. They, the reason why they didn't come forward and make suggestions was they, um, they didn't have time to discuss it at their meeting, but um, especially around the floor area ratio, some people were saying they'd like to see it go back to point three five. And as we know, Julie would like to do a, uh, lot coverage. So um, those things haven't been vetted through the EDC, so I'm not sure that they have, there's consensus there with what they're actually looking for. So I, I would say just have our meeting on the, the eighteenth.
Anyone else?
Nope.
Mr. Mills.
Wait, I'm sorry, someone, uh, last minute hand raised here. Mr. Miller?
Hi, planning board.
Good evening.
Sorry, I had a little trouble for a second. Um, just a quick note. A, a vote of support and confidence, I think you folks did the right thing last week. I think the Board of Selectmen did the right thing last week. And I, I don't know, um, how much you could negotiate with a, a committee that doesn't show up to these hearings. Neither last day nor this week. Um, so it's very kind of you to continue to, um, keep the public hearing open. But, uh, I don't really think you should change your position. So, um, thank you for your time and, and have a good night. Keep it up.
Thank you. Anyone else?
So Jeremy, make a motion, we continue the public hearing for proposed downtown business, uh, downtown district bylaw zoning map and design guidelines to October eighteenth at seven fifteen PM.
Second. Most has been made and seconded. Any, any discussion? Hearing on all in favor, Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes?
Luttrell, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, everyone. Move on to the next agenda item, which is a, a public hearing for three twenty-five Turnpike Road, Ken's Foods Expansion, Major Site Plan Approval and three twenty-five Turnpike
expansion, major site plan approval and 325 Turnpike Road, Ken's Foods expansion, special permit for lower impact development. Well, ask the town planner to read the public hearing notice.
All right, this is the public hearing notice for major site plan approval and special permit for lower impact development. 325 Turnpike Road Assessor's Map, 26 Parcels 2 and 10. For Section 17410 of the South Rose Zoning Code, the planning board of the town of Southborough shall hold a public hearing on Monday, September 27th, 2021 via remote Zoom meeting to consider application of James Born, representative of Ken's Foods for major site plan approval at 7:20 PM. For Section 174-13.3 of the South Rose Zoning Code, the planning board of the town of Southborough shall hold a public hearing on Monday, September 27th, 2021 via remote Zoom meeting to consider the application of James Born, representative of Ken's Foods for special permit for lower impact development at 7:25 PM. These hearings concern the development of 62,500 square foot warehouse expansion, related drainage improvements, relocation of the emergency vehicle access road and fire protection water service around the expansion. The 51.5 acre parcel is located primarily in an industrial park zoning district at 325 Turnpike Road. Assessor's map, 26 Parcels 2 and 10. A copy of the plans and application may be reviewed on the planning board's webpage or in person at the Southborough Townhouse during normal business hours. Pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, this meeting will be held virtually. No in-person attendance by the public. Persons wishing to participate in this meeting while in progress may do so by going online to southbrowntown.com/remotemeetings. Donald C. Morris, Chair, Planning Board.
Thank you. So, so let's have you, Karina, give us the setup, which is when the application was submitted and what we have so far, not just from the proponent, but from other boards, from our engineering consultant and the neighbors.
Okay. Well, uh, the engineer or designer, I should say, is John G. Crowe Associates, represented by Scott Doty. And this project is for Ken's Foods, and we currently have Jim Born here from Ken's Foods. So the first submission was filed with the town clerk on September 8th. The legal ads were published in the newspaper on September 13th and September 20th. They were forwarded, the legal ad was provided to towns and agencies as required. And also submitted to Fussin O'Neil for review at the same time. These were plans dated August 30th, 2021 with a stormwater report dated August 30th, 2021. There was a Conservation Commission meeting on September 16th for stormwater management permit. It's my understanding that they still have to submit for a notice of intent filing with the Conservation. Last Thursday on the 23rd, as required, we received the green cards and mailing receipts of the butter notifications that were mailed out by the proponent. Today, September 27th, I received two emails from Deborah de Moria, 58 Flag Road. One was a border health letter to the ZBA during the special permit process with the ZBA back in May of this year. The second one was an email from Deborah de Moria, again, identifying some noise concerns that they have with the site. And that brings us to this evening. I've gotten feedback from Fussin O'Neil that they anticipate providing a review letter by Wednesday, the 29th. They had some extensive, they, they commented on the drainage that they were looking at there more closely. In addition, we are waiting to receive an updated existing conditions plan from the proponent, which was promised to us by September 27th. And perhaps they can speak to that after. I have not received that yet. The existing conditions plan that was provided in the plan set included parts of an as-built that had been provided, but not reviewed. An as-built, which is also required by the Conservation Commission, and topography and survey that was initiated in 2007 and then restamped by the surveyor in 2017 when they came through with other applications. And those were considered outdated, so the proponent is currently working on providing us with updated existing conditions. And that brings us to tonight.
So before we hear from the, the proponent, the public has just heard something that Mr. Stein brought up earlier, which is how long it takes for a site plan to be performed? And virtually every single site plan submittal that we get is incomplete. And we still launch on the public hearing anticipating that those materials will be received. And sometimes they are, and sometimes they're not. And it inevitably causes the process to take a lot longer. But we've worked with Ken's Foods before and look forward to working with you again. So Scott, welcome back. And what we expect you to present tonight, probably won't get a whole lot of questions or comments from the board because we don't have anything from our consultant and the submittal you made is, is, has some missing pieces, but we can make some progress tonight.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to clarify a few things before I go in and give you a general overview and presentation of the project. I think I'll just try to touch everything this evening briefly. One, we have, we are, we do have a notice of intent submittal. It's been into the Conservation Commission and that hearing with the stormwater management permit is coming for their next hearing date. As far as the existing conditions information in the area of the proposed construction, we did receive our stamped PLS, existing conditions survey. I didn't understand that we should submit that to planning, but we were going to, I will do that now. We did receive it Friday and stamp plan this morning. And we plan to just incorporate it into our plans underneath our plans, but I will get a copy of the existing conditions per, uh, plan to, uploaded to our shared file site with, with the planning department. We do have that.
Scott, I just want to point out that in order for Fussin O'Neil to, you know, do a complete review of the drainage, they do need the updated existing conditions information in order to see that the proposed drainage components are being tied into the existing drainage properly. So it would be helpful if we could get that.
Yep, thank you. The, I, if, if I may, may I share my screen?
Yep, you should be all set to do so.
Thank you, Sarah.
You're welcome.
I'm supposing you can see the screen, the cover sheet for the set of plans.
Yes.
I don't think I need to introduce this board. I believe everybody on the board, maybe is probably familiar with where the site is and where it lays in relationship to north of Route 9 and surrounded by the neighborhoods of Deerfoot Road and some of the other neighborhoods to the north. Adjacent to also many commercial properties to the south, west and east. The it's probably best to get to an overview. A little bit of history. The board may remember that we were before the board, several years ago now, maybe five years ago now, for renovation of the site when Ken's Foods purchased the property and renovated the site quite dramatically, actually, with significant environmental protection and water quality improvements. Improvements to the drainage system and obvi, and, and obviously many improvements to the building, including a state-of-the-art warehousing system. Subsequent to, then I'll get a little bit more into that because that ties into the addition and the growth on the site and the direction and why it's going where it is. In addition to that, at, when, after the project construction had started, the owner decided that he wanted to make some improvements to other areas of the site that we hadn't touched upon in our original submittal. And immediately moved and, and proceeded with the removal of some pavement areas and increasing the open space and green spaces on the site. I think we, everybody recognized, including the planning board and the Conservation Commission, that it was a significant improvement to the site. And subsequent to the commencement of that work, we received approvals for those amendments or those changes to the plans. The, the warehouse itself has got a state-of-the-art system of robotic warehousing work. And it's basically in most of the south area here. I presume you can see my cursor moving. And the system is set up on a, on a, on a strong east-west axis. And when I say axis, I mean line. And therefore, any, any logical expansion of that would need to go eastward, westward being the area being covered by the truck, what we call the truck port and loading dock area with the stormwater improvement system below it. Obviously, the north end is, we have quite a narrow area between it and the channeled drainage system that's there. In the south, we have the underground detention area, infiltration area, I call it, even though it can't be officially called an infiltration area to the south of the building that handles some of the roof. So the proposal is to take advantage of this area to the east of the site that had been laying fallow, with the exception of when we went before the board for the amendments to add green space to the site. A topic of, had been raised by the open space committee, commission in town that they would like us to initiate wildflower plantings. And that area also became to dual purpose for us. It was a way for us to keep some soil on the site instead of trucking it away, but also a place to plant the wildflower. We can get into that a little bit more later, and I'm sure there are some questions on that. So the expansion would go to the east in this area, and I'll go in a little bit more detail, zoom into that area. The area of construction is the, is on primarily, again, on the east side of the building, the southeast. And there will be some change and disturbance into the south lawn area where we would expand the underground detention slash infiltration area. Some other factors on the site, we wanted to restore or replace the displaced wildflower area with a wet wildflower metal area and grasses to the east of where our construction will be. And the construction includes the expansion, but also a, the emergency vehicle drive that needs to be relocated around the, the warehouse also. So this underground detention infiltration area would take the roof drainage from the addition. And all, and, and with the increased size of, of this underground area, we'd be able to maintain our peak rates of runoff. And although we cannot calculate a volume reduction, the fact of the matter is that the system itself creates a volume that that will allow infiltration to some extent into the surrounding soils. But groundwater under natural conditions is very high, so this area is continuously, well, in between storm events, creating its volume by, by taking in groundwater and then, and then releasing it slowly into the surrounding water resource system, creating that volume for the next storm, which then holds, retains, infiltrates some, but also detains and releases at a slower rate of runoff from the underground detention area. The the system is, allows, the way you have the design allows us for potential, and we should discuss with the board a bit, and Fussin O'Neil, the consultant, a, a level spreader for a portion of the roof. We were able to take the southernmost sections of the building roof potentially. We bring them out from underneath the building in rainwater, leading us at a higher elevation. And we could incorporate a a lower impact solution here in which at least some of the roof can then be drained in a spread manner, almost a natural-like manner, onto the grasses in front of the, to the south of the building. And then travel a 200-foot-plus air length to get before it gets to any resources, therefore, sort of percolating into the ground, much like it would have as if the rainfall had not written, fallen on the roof, but also had fallen onto ground. One of the problems with that, that I think it's a, it's an interesting idea is that when you model it, it will increase the peak rates of runoff. We're still reduced from existing conditions, but it increases it as opposed to when we put the entire roof into the system below the ground. I guess, but you know, those drainage might say intuitively that makes sense. Another alternative that we've come to in terms of lower impact practices is we were looking for, and we were able to find a porous pavement solution that we're happy with that we could incorporate into the construction of the portions of the emergency drive as it goes around the building. This would be a, this is the UNH large aggregate by-tominous concrete solution, which we, I think, one of the most successful examples of it is at, that I know personally and observed is in Winchester Hospital, Winchester, Massachusetts, and in which they have a 300-car parking lot and built on top of this entire thing. But I think our situation is superior to that. And the fact is that this is not going to be a utilized pavement system except during emergencies. And we are not therefore concerned with an excessive vehicular use of it, in which you might be concerned about pollutants as such. Also, it satisfies the constraint to which we want to have a, a good snow removal surface, so the fire department is, is pleased with that throughout the year. It wouldn't be sanded. We don't worry about that aspect of it either. So that's another low-impact practice, that lower-impact practice that we would like to propose. Overall, I think it was important from a, a site plan standpoint to understand that this addition will not require will not require an increase in population on the project site at all. That, that, that affects two important metrics for any site development. One being, does that, is there, is an increase in square footage equal to an increase in required parking? In this case, our proposal is that it does not. And we believe that we have enough of our plans ready that we can request that confirmation and an agreement on that position with the building inspector to, to provide that understanding as a condition of the, of, of, of a, of a site, a site, a special permit approval. The other aspect that becomes important, does a square footage increase als- does that also equal, equal an increase in the need for sanitary disposal flows? And again, this is a, this portion of this expansion is entirely going to be pallets and robotics. And again, does not require the, an increase in population, nor does it increase, an increase in sanitary flows. And we've been trying to make, and we've been going back, trying to contact the, the health, dentist, the health department, and have been unsuccessful. So we believe now the point is we just simply need to make a, a written informational package to the Board of Health on that topic. And, and receive a, a waiver in that regard. So that might be another concern that the planning board would have also. And just to wrap up, sort of a general aspect of the overall site from a lower impact development standpoint. With the exception of the truck courtyard, which is, which is a high-use area in terms of potential for pollutant loads and such. Where the, that drainage is captured within structural systems, contact systems. Where solids are, and pollutants are either separated out by float, by, because they're floatable or by the centrifuge separating out the total suspended solids to, to approximately 90% plus. That then, that, with the exception of that area and this area in the front where we're going underground with portions of the existing roof and the entire proposed roof into the system underground. The remainder of the drainage system on the site and conveyance system of drainage is all natural country-like drainage system with channels, swales, many of which, or most of which, if I probably am to say all of which have turned into wetlands over the, over the years. And are therefore doing bio-retention work in terms of low-impact. So the site from the start has been that way. Probably because its age more than, more than any other reason, quite frankly, being originally built in 70s. And also its elevation being so low to the groundwater. But in addition to that, when we, we did our renovation project a few years back, we also reduced the pavement dramatically, as I pointed out. This project itself does make a small reduction in, in pavement. And in addition to that, when the, when the older, when the project was, was presented a few years ago, we introduced a new bio-retention area here, an important lower, lower impact development feature in this northeast corner. And that's going to be retained. And still will, it will, it will actually have to handle less pavement area because the pavement area they're reducing is in that northeast parking lot in this area here. But those are, those are the major elements as far as lower impact. As far as landscaping and lighting, the landscape proposed, we believe is in keeping with the character of the, the existing character that's been created in, in the front of the building. Again, we're reducing some pavement, but very, very little bit. So we're increasing landscape that way. In terms of lighting, there's no new lighting proposed here for this addition. Emergency, sort of small overhead lights at, at emergency exits are simply going to be moved out to the outer eastern edge of the, the new emergency exits, which are pretty much parallel where, where they were before. So there's no increase in parking, there's, where there's no increase in, in parking lighting as such. A second here, I want to make sure there's any other points. As far as, yeah, there are some, some issues that to discuss related to the water quality improvements and the best managed practices. Or, or if you would like to call them lower-impact development practices that were constructed with the prior project. There is, Ken's Food has been sweeping these parking lots on a quarterly basis and cleaning these, cleaning the catch basins and the water quality structures on an annual basis. And we are right now in the process of getting together the, the, the detail on that from their hired contractor who's been doing that for them. One of the problems is the, the company they originally started with was bought by another company. They need to go back through the older company's records for the first year. But we're putting that together not only for the planning board, but also for the conservation commission related to the what you want to call either the O and M plan or the I and M, or the inspection and maintenance plan, which we think are generally one and the same. And which we expect would be to some extent to stand the way it is now. And the commitments that have been made by Ken's Foods would continue for all the existing elements out there. If we do, if it is thought to be favorable to have, and I'll just in one more minute, favorable to incorporate the level spreader on this pro, on this site, and also the porous pavement, which I think everybody could agree would be a good solution. We would need to add those elements and turn to that O and M plan. And for their inspection and regular reporting on a regular basis also. So I might have forgotten something. I'd invite any questions, but also, I know I don't know if he's been added to the conversation here, but I know Attorney Bill Pizzoni is with, with Jim and I tonight. And I believe he's connected by phone. And I'm sure if I've forgotten some aspect of it, Bill might remember, but I'd like to turn it back to you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Morris, if, if you would like.
Okay, thank, thank you.
I'll, I'll, I'll stop sharing so everybody can see each other's, and I can always bring this back. Or any of the plans in the set, if there are questions. Oh, I see Bill is on. Yep.
Does he want to speak?
Yeah, Mr. Morris, Mr. Chairman Morris, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. How is everybody?
I think we're okay tonight.
Good, that's good. I think Scott hit everything that's being done on the plan. The key thing to remember is it's just, it's a box on the east side of the building. There'll be no entrance or exit out of the three walls. It'll be going up. They're going to move the fire protection to swoop around it, so that won't be impacted. One thing I would, I noticed you said you received some letters from Deb Demaria. If those could be forwarded to me, I'd appreciate it. Only because we met with her sound consultant back in July after zoning board approval, or right around the time of zoning board approval, and provided him with pretty much all the information he requested relative to our sound testing. And he was to get back to us, and I have not heard anything since the middle of July. So if he's got something he wants to submit, or Deb does, I, you know, I'm an open book. I'm, I'm happy to listen to them and receive whatever they have.
Okay. What I'd like to do is go to the neighbors before we go to the planning board members. So if there's any neighbor that would like to speak, this is the time.
With Jack Bartolini with his hand raised.
Yeah, he should be also. Jack should be also to speak. Just really either.
He's still muted. There we go.
Have you got me now?
You do.
Okay, good evening. My only concern here is Scott did a great job explaining this, and he's correct. There are channels that go all around his property. Our Ken's Foods property, and those channels take the water from the southern side of Route 9 also, the historic, they've been there for years. And they, they work, they do a good job. And I just want to make sure that they're not impeded or would cause any problem for the south side of Route 9, my property in particular, that flows onto theirs. A few years ago, we had troubles with beavers and that took about two years, three years to get rid of, but, and that worked great. So that's my only concern is that that, that flow does not change and continues to take the water that it's been taken.
Yeah, can you reference the, I just said that property that is yours you're referring to?
I'm across the street, I believe I'm 276, 280, 276, 278, 280 Turnpike Road. That's directly across.
Thanks, just for the, for the record.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yeah, go ahead.
Hi, Jack, good to hear from you. The no, we are actually with this project, we've made the detention area, underground detention area a little bit larger than probably really needed to be. So we are actually still, we are actually reducing the peak rates of runoff from where they are now. So the flow should go, should be less from the site during periods of, of intense rain that we, and, and therefore the overall, this whole, you know, ditch, which has become a brook, that we basically relocated, obviously at some point for Route 9. It's rather a nice actually right now. We've, it should flow lower elevation. And we are in front of the conservation commission. One of the questions we have in front of the commission is an ongoing beaver maintenance. And there still could be some improvements that we make at the old cow crossing, if you know what I'm talking about, Jack. At the exit of our property. There's a block culvert there still, and a few more, maybe another foot that could be gained there to help us all out. Help the whole area out a little bit, but we're going to work with them on that.
That's great.
So we're, we're hopeful, we're hopeful that that would be a help, not, we're selfish in our point, of course, because we need that, we want, we want it lower also, so our system would work better. But we know it helps you too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so.
Any of the other neighbors?
Yes. Mr. Morris, you also?
Hi there, it's Debbie Demaria, 58 Flag Road. Can you hear me?
We can, good evening.
Hi, good evening. I just wanted to bring to the attention the longstanding issue that we've had with the property and the noise emanating from Ken's ever since the operations moved from the east side to the property, of the property to the west. We, I sent a letter today. You know, I, I think it's clear, we, we don't know what the source of the noise is, and I understand it's not exactly under your purview. But I also wanted to let you know, and I sent a copy of the letter that the Board of Health had written, that they don't support any future expansion of Ken's until the noise, which is a public health safety concern is, is under control, which it currently really is not. At the ZBA public hearing, which of course I recuse myself because I'm a sitting board member. We, you know, we, I would say I was surprised by the number of people who turned out at that hearing. So I would like this board to know, this isn't really just something that is affecting me and my property. It may, maybe my property is situated in a funny spot that there's some sort of, you know, reflection or something that's coming over to my property, and I'm hearing it more than others. But at the ZBA hearings back in April and May, there was about 22 to 25 people in attendance. That's, that's larger than ZBA hearing, any hearing that we've had in the last probably year or so. And there were numerous neighbors who spoke out, and it's in the public minutes, who are, you know, on the east side as well, and, and they, they had concerns also. The, the day of the ZBA meeting, a couple of the board members went down to speak to some members of, you know, Mr. Pizzoni and Mr. Born, and, and, and take a tour. And to, to quote one of them, I was told it was slamming down there. So they were, they counted maybe 90 to 100 trucks. And the trucks were making noise, and it was pretty clear that the noise was coming from the trucks. And so, you know, I don't know if, you know, we, we really understand where the noise is coming from, but I quoted, sent you a little clip of the planning, I'm sorry, the ZBA minute where Mr. Pizzoni says there are anywhere from 60 to 90 or 100 trucks a day in full cycle. 60% of those or thereabouts are in the early morning to like 5 o'clock. And the balance, 30 or 40% is spread over the whole rest of the evening and through the night. I don't disagree with that. I would like you to know that there was also a statement that the trucks are being sent over from Marlboro. They're ending up starting up at about 4:30 in the morning, 4:30, 5 o'clock in the morning. I consider that overnight hours. But being as a significant, you know, the, the trucking activity is happening at night. I'd like to draw your attention to section 17412C1 of the zoning code. This has to do with dimensional requirements, which I believe falls into your purview. This has to do with the loading docks. And if it's okay, I'd like to just read that section. Would that be okay? It's pretty short.
Yes.
Okay, it says, it starts loading. Each loading space shall not be less than 10 feet wide in width, 14 feet in height. And of such length that a truck or trailer occupying the space shall be entirely in the loading space and not project, and shall not project into any street vehicular accessway or pedestrian walk. The loading space may use common access driveways and aisles with parking spaces where such access is adequate for both purposes. If located within 50 feet of a residence district or if used frequently at night, loading spaces shall be enclosed. So as we know, this property uses both the industrial and residential property. Obviously, the building is not on the residential property, but the septic is, so the full property is being used. For that statement, if located within 50 feet of a residence district, it is on the district, in the district. However, it says, or if used frequently at night, loading spaces shall be enclosed. So in my email, I sent a picture that I just pulled down from the internet. It happens to be since the reconfiguration shows the trucks in the bays, they're not enclosed. And I believe that's maybe one condition that could help with the noise. I think that's probably why the bylaw was, was put in place. And so that I would ask for your consideration. Thank you. And in general, I'd be happy to answer any questions as well.
Want to speak, Bill?
Yeah, if I could. Yeah, we'll, we'll share our reports that we got from our sound people showing that basically the sound emanating from Ken's doesn't exceed DEP, DEP standards. And I was kind of surprised to hear Deb say that. DEP, DEP standards, and I was kind of surprised to hear Deb say that the Board of Health says we're in violation. Maybe I misinterpreted what she said. So we'll be happy to share with the board the results from our sound expert, which has been shared with hers as well. So that, you know, you guys can look at it. To determine whether or not we're exceeding that, and I believe there is canopies over most of the the loading docks at this point. But I'll have to defer to Jim on that one. But, you know, we're happy to address problems, I understand this has been longstanding with Deb and her family and with a couple of others. But, you know, if we're not exceeding DEP standards, I don't think it's a public health or safety issue. But again, Ken's is always willing to try to see what they can do to subdue any noise. And I don't think. Just for clarity, when I was there with the ZBA members, I don't think there were ninety to a hundred trucks there. Because you couldn't fit them, you couldn't fit them on the site. But that being said, Mr. Mars, we'll be happy to share with you whatever you need relative to the sound. Thank you.
Anyone else from the neighbors?
Don't see any additional hands raised.
We've been on this for a while. I guess I'll open it up to the planning board. But. There's still more information to be presented. And hopefully that. Will keep this moving, Mr. Mills.
Yeah, Scott, thanks for the presentation, appreciate it and welcome back. I think the. The noise, obviously, we got. A couple of letters on that, so I don't want to go any deeper on that, you'll have plenty of time to talk about that in future meetings. I appreciate you addressing the, I think it was a wildflower pasture that was originally put before, it'd be interesting to see how. You know, going forward. What you would be thinking to do to replace that or put something else in, because I know the open space was really. Very happy with what what Ken's came up with for that solution. So it'd be nice to be able to keep that piece in there. And waiting to hear what we hear from Fussin O'Neil and everything, those are my only comments for tonight, and thanks again for the presentation.
Mr. Stein.
Yeah. I I'm a little bit concerned about Mr. Pizoni's comments. You know. This is a residential community and when we have residents raising concerns. Would like to think that our. Commercial. Partners would be sensitive to those and would be open to. Working with the butters. To address their concerns and. I'm hopeful that. There's a. A change in attitude going forward. You know. It's not, it's not necessarily an accusation, it's, it's, you know, somebody's raising a concern. And. If I was, if I was the proponent, I would. Think about maybe taking an approach of, you know, geez. We're willing to listen to with the issues and and, you know, give it, give credence. That's it, thank you.
Mr., I mean, Mrs. Latrell.
Thank you and good evening. Question on the cover sheet. The lid information table, the lot area is different than the lot area listed on the zoning dimensional table?
We're getting unmuted there, you're saying that the the lot area is different?
Yeah, it's, it lists two, two, four, three, three, seven, seven under the lid and then. Four, one, six, nine, four, seven, two, under. The dimensional table, and I don't know where that number comes from.
Oh my, yeah, yeah. The, we're gonna have to figure out what that is, it's the, it's a fifty one point five acres.
Which would be the two, two, four, three, three, seven, seven.
Yeah, it's fifty. Fifty, yeah, no, it's the two, it's the two, it's a two point two million, I don't. I don't know that four point one. That egg on my face here, so the. We'll fix that, obviously. But it's obviously, it complies with all of that, but that number on the right is wrong.
Yeah, I just didn't know where that number.
Oh, thank, thank you for bringing that up, thank you. Apologies. I don't know where, I actually don't, we, we just know that we're all, we know that we have plenty, and I guess it's something that we don't focus on, on. On, on, because we know we have plenty. Foolish. Thank you.
You're welcome, on to the wildflower meadow. I was out there last week and it's all non-native clover. Which I thought it was supposed to be in a native wildflower meadow. So that isn't really in compliance with what was.
Yeah, we did get a, we did get a email from Freddie today. And she came, she also, she met, she noticed that herself, Mrs. Latrell, she. I I know that Jim worked very hard establishing that, well, it took a couple of seedings to get it going and. I do know that a year or so, it was quite flourishing quite well. It looks to me that clover has invaded and taken over the area and. I think we're gonna have to work at that. With better success in any relocation that we do.
And. So that was. At least thirty three thousand five hundred square feet and you're proposing replacing it with seventeen thousand five hundred square foot?
Well, we we originally proposed, if I may, Mr. Chairman, we originally posed just over eighteen thousand square feet originally was the area that was originally proposed. But I think we ended up planting more, I think Jim was trying, I think Mr. Born was trying to. Get it accomplished because the first plant didn't work, and so we seeded a greater area. In, what's the term, an exuberance of wanting to be successful in it, we planted a larger area.
So I have a letter dated July sixteen, twenty nineteen, signed by you, that said. This area to be planted. Is at least thirty three thousand five hundred square feet?
The area was to be planted, I guess it did change from the original, I'm sorry, I think it did change from the original. In any event, we need to find the right amount of replacement area. For the thirty thousand, seventeen is not enough.
Right, and I would suggest a narrow strip. Wouldn't accomplish the same environmental benefits as the the large. Rectangular meadow that it's replacing.
We, where we are, where it's going to be lower and more wet, I think we're going to be rather. Probably more successful with a wet. Wetland grasses or wetland, wetland tolerant grasses in that, in that strip area than we were in a higher, but. Freddie made the same comment. And we did receive that earlier today, but we need to work with her. And love. If you would, if we could involve you also, that would be great, because I know that it's your expertise also.
In the the line of trees that's. To the north of the proposed. Expansion is being removed? Are are those being replaced?
The, we are not, we, we are not, we're not replacing those, we don't have, we haven't proposed a in-kind replacement of those trees, no. They are, we are gonna lose those, because that's right where the expansion is. Is going to, yeah.
And on the plans. There are references to transplanted trees and shrubs. Where are those coming from?
Some of the landscape in front of the building. Has been done over the last few years, there's some, there are some nice species in there and things that worthwhile of reusing. And so. It's our. Hope that we can. Since they, since they haven't grown that much, they probably still have rather intact root balls where they can be. Relocated to an adjacent plant by there that wasn't being disturbed, healed in temporarily and then reused and transplanted. Around, in front of the. Portions of the, of the addition, that's what that refers to.
Okay, so they're existing on the site?
Yes, there is, there's also over by the, there's also a handful of them. Over by the bio retention basin at the northeast. Where we're, where we're going to be close to a corner of it, some of those plants, we want to also do the same thing with them, heal them in someplace temporarily and then bring them back. To approximately where they are.
And the last thing, a lot of the. Shrubs that were. Part of the previous modification on the east side of that employee parking lot are all dead.
I think, yeah, I think you might be, I even referring to the ones on the area on the north, if I'm not mistaken, on the north side of the building. Yeah, that, that's part of our, an area for. Some upwind enhancement replication that we were doing for the Conservation Commission. That that needs to be redone, some of that, a good, a good number of those plants have not, have not been successful.
I'm talking about the employee parking lot on the. East side of the building?
No, I was talking on the north side, but so we are, so there's two areas where there's some work that needs to be done. Around, you're talking about around the bio retention area, I think, in the northeast, there are some, there are a number of plants there that do need to be replaced. Yes, also. But there's more, there's more of that on the north side, I thought that's what you were talking about. And we're working with, we have to work with the Conservation Commission, then. Their consultant, Lucas Environmental, and get those things to to work out.
And the last question. Karina, we didn't receive a letter from the zoning Board of Appeals with their. Concerns on the noise on the site because. As part of the approval and it's in their. May nineteenth minutes, they were going to send a letter to the planning board voicing their concerns with the.
Yes, we, I believe we received a letter and I. I think I emailed it out at the time, and I thought it was listed in the Dropbox. For this, but I may have it just on the server under this. But what I'll do is I'll get that letter out and resend it and then we'll post it with the information, I think they had three concerns. If you give me one second, I might be able to just find it right here. Quickly. Just give me one second, see if I can locate it. Fast. CBA. Yeah. Hold on, one second, it's just opening. It was a letter dated June eighth, two thousand twenty one. To the planning board. The zoning Board of Appeals recently approved the application by Ken's Food for special permit. To allow the expansion of a building to exceed fifty thousand square feet, but we wanted you to note certain concerns. Understanding that Ken's needs to come for, meet the planning board for plant site plan approval. Ken's will, number one, Ken's will continue to work with the butters on the noise complaints associated with the trucks and refrigeration units on the west side of the building. It is the opinion of the board that the application for expansion has no impact on noise and therefore could be approved without conditions, but the ZBA does consider the noise complaint serious. And an issue that Ken's should continue to work with. On with their neighbors. Number two, continued or additional monitoring of truck traffic and traffic patterns. Primary concern here is to continue to keep Ken's trucks off smaller roads in South Bend where they do not. Belong, this has been communicated previously with Ken's and we believe this has been shared with the truck drivers that pick up and deliver from Ken's site. Due to the many contracted services with Ken's, the need to continue to communicate to drivers needs to be ongoing and the town will need to continue to monitor compliance. And then lastly, the consideration of visual improvements on the east side of the building, this has been previously addressed with agreed upon tree planting, this may need to be considered in light of the proposed expansion to the east side of the building. That was from the chair. Of the ZBA. Is that the letter you're talking about?
That is the letter, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Hoolian.
Thank you, the proponents may recognize my name, I had written a letter to the ZBA as a resident and I just wanted to state that. My, my objectivity here is as a planning board and submitting or supporting the bylaws that we are enacted to support, so. I just wanted to let you know that I'm bringing my objectivity to the lens today and look forward to receiving a little bit more content that we can review. To supplement your submission.
Very good. What I'd like to do is. Keep moving. Strongly recommend. That those missing pieces. People work on getting those missing pieces in as soon as possible. So that. The whole package can be reviewed. As a whole and in its little pieces, so with that, I would recommend that we entertain a.
Don, can I just ask one quick thing here? Scott, as the representative for Ken's and submitting the plans. Are you going to submit the existing conditions plan to me? Soon, or are you going to provide a revised set this week, or are you waiting? I mean, I just want a clear path here, I'm expecting to have the existing condition so I can provide it to Fussin O'Neil. Yet they're working on something to provide feedback on by Wednesday, so I'd like to get them something tomorrow if I could so that they could. Start to consider that and then in your next revised set of site plans. That that existing conditions will be fully incorporated into the revised plans. Is that correct?
We can provide the existing conditions immediately. And, but it will take us more than a few days to quickly incorporate that underneath into our, under our proposed conditions in our plans, we need more, we need a few days to do that. So, yes and yes.
So my plan of action is that, once you send me the existing conditions plan that's updated, I'm going to provide that to Fussin O'Neil right away. And then they'll incorporate what they can into this current review, and then when you get me a full revised set of plans, I'm going to get that to Fussin O'Neil. As the second submission.
Okay.
I'm hoping to get that pretty quickly once you have. Your revised set, but I need to give them something in order to finish their initial review.
Yeah.
Wednesday, so that we have something to go by and then they'll supplement the review.
Yeah.
Okay.
Entertainer motion to continue the public hearing, the.
Mr. Mars, if I could, if I could, before you proceed, I just wanted to clarify something for Mr. Stein. Ken's has worked cooperatively with the neighbors over the last ten years, when the first expansion went on, we met with the neighbors regularly, we met their concerns and their needs. We, I met with Deb and consultants and with the zoning board on multiple occasions, we reconfigured traffic. To see if that was part of the issue, and part of the reason we were waiting for a response from Deb's expert. Was they were going to review everything and get back to us with potentially some suggestions. Because we weren't able to identify. The exact cause of the sound that's, that's emanating to her or to other neighbors for that matter. That is, even if it isn't in violation, if there's a way to correct it, we want to try to correct it. But having not heard from her expert, I don't know if he found anything or if he didn't. Or if he didn't, didn't find anything, or if he has suggestions, we figured two heads were better than one, so. To the point of, maybe you thought I was being short, Mr. Stein, I was not, we're open. I was not, we're open, the proponents open to discuss things, as long as they're, it's reasonable and it's going to address the issue. We, what we don't want to do is spend money on something that isn't going to address the issue. So, you know, we're happy to work with them, we'll continue to work with them, and Deb, if you're still on, if your consultant has come up with anything, please provide it to us, okay? Thank you.
Mr. Mills would be interested in. A motion to continue the public hearing hearings. The major site plan approval period ends on November eighth and the lid on December eighth, Mr. Mills.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we continue the public hearing for twenty, three twenty-five Turnpike Road, Ken's Food Expansion, major site plan approval. For seven twenty PM on October eighteenth, and then. It's the eighteenth, right? Okay, and then I make a motion, we continue the public hearing for three twenty-five Turnpike Road, Ken's Food Expansion Special Permit. For LID for seven twenty-five PM on October eighteenth.
I second both.
Let's, okay, motions been made and seconded, let's take the vote on the first one, which is the site plan, Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes?
Latrell, yes.
Holyan, yes.
And the second motion for the lid, any discussion, hearing not all in favor, Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes?
Latrell, yes.
Holyan, yes.
Okay, thanks, and now we'll see you on the eighteenth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is approval not required, one and seven Sears Road, we can get that up on the screen. And Karina, give us the. Update on this one.
All right, very quickly, we received an A and R for one and seven Sears Road. On September twenty-second, we filed it with the town clerk, and I did a review of the information. The applicant provided some revisions, including showing the stone wall on the Sears Road scenic road portion of the properties. There are taking one Sears Road and you'll see in the, in the top left corner, there's an outline of number seven Sears Road. So in essence, they're expanding seven into lot one and then taking the remaining land and creating three more lots, so there's a total of four lots that will be created. They have proper frontage on a way. And I don't know if Mr. Vinin Casa is here. Is there anybody in the audience who's here to represent? Here he is. Sarah DC, Jim?
Yep, he's all set, he should be coming over, just didn't, he didn't have his last name this time, so.
Okay, so Jim Vinin Casa is the current owner of Sears, well, number one and seven. And he can answer any further questions, but I did review the plan and all the notes and. It seemed in order.
Put up to the board, Mr. Mills.
I have no questions.
Mr. Stein?
No questions.
This is Latrell.
No questions.
And Mrs. Holyan?
Let's make it four, no questions.
And neither do I, so, Mr. Mills? Need a motion to endorse the A and R.
I'm sorry, make a motion, we approve the request to endorse the A and R for one and seven Sears Road as requested by the applicant.
Second.
Most has been made and seconded, any questions, comments? Hearing not all in favor, Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes?
Latrell, yes.
Holyan, yes.
Believe it or not, that is not the fastest A and R we've done. It's close. Anything else? So the, Karina, you'll notify the planning board when we can come in to sign.
Absolutely, we'll get it prepared tomorrow or the next day and then I'll send out an email. And if need be, I can come over to some of the houses and at lunchtime or whatever to get you guys to sign it, we're working out of the house.
Very good, thank you.
All right, excellent, thank you, thank you so much.
Okay, good night. First, the next item on the agenda is a discussion item, review of outdoor illumination rules and regulations, who's going to start this off?
You want me to take it, Karina?
If you'd like.
Sure, so the the Board of Selectmen had an an open discussion at their selectman meeting last month, Tuesday. And I attended on behalf of the committee and they, the the general style and tone, they all agreed and provided positive feedback that they liked the changes. We mostly focused on enforcement, the remaining rules and regulations they they discussed were very technical, and so we focused our discussion on enforcement. They made some suggestions, some typos that were caught, and they were in generally supportive of the approach. Mr. Healy had some suggestions around kind of legalese and being able to utilize some alternative words and phrases. And had suggested that once I take a stab, which I agreed to do, to modify that, those words and the phrases. To modify those words and phrases, I would send that back to Karina, Karina would then have the building commissioner review those enforcement changes. And then we would send it on to Attorney Tallerman for his kind of support or potential tweaks of the language. But I think we have consensus on a path forward and it now just resides in my to-do, which I hope to do this week.
As soon as you get that to me, I'll work as fast as I can to move it to the building. I spoke with Lori LaBoli today, so she's expecting that.
On our way to a happy ending. Lot of work, went into that, Marty, lot of work.
Absolutely.
Great job, very comprehensive and, but very easy to understand, so great job.
Paul, Sarah, and we had obviously Dustin as well, it was a group effort.
It was, it was, it was a real group effort, and Marty did a great job at the Board of Selectmen meeting. I listened in to the live stream a little bit while I was driving, so I'm just glad that everything is is still continuing to move forward in such a positive way.
Yeah, it's a great update to the bylaw. And hopefully will serve the people of South Row very well over the next many years. Anything else on this?
No, I think the only comment is we still have yet to hear from the Attorney General on the actual approval of it as law, so we're still waiting for that.
I can point out that we do have an unofficial. Copy from the town clerk's office that we do provide to applicants who are preparing site plans or subdivisions, so that they understand. That if it's approved by the Attorney General, they are, that they're incorporating these requirements already.
Anything else?
Are we waiting on all the bylaws from town meeting to, for Attorney General approval, so none of them?
Not yet, not that I know. None yet.
Move on to the next item on the agenda, thanks a lot, Marty, which is the planners report.
All right, quickly, we have an update from the Board of Selectmen regarding public meetings and the option to meet in person if it's necessary. If the venue is better with a large amount of people, they still suggest continuing with Zoom, so I think they're leaning that we still maintain Zoom meetings for a while. And I forwarded that email to everybody, so I'm assuming that we'll continue right now with. Virtual meetings. Until I'm notified otherwise. I have an agenda for the Board of Selectmen for September twenty-ninth at seven thirty AM, at which an agenda item says closing, special town. Meeting warrant for November first, so no new articles after that supposedly. Quick note, Chestnut Hill Road, there was a petition to close a portion of that roadway, the Board of Selectmen, if you want any additional information on that. Can let me know and people can call my office too. And that's all I have.
Does the board want to send an opinion relative to the closing of part of Chestnut Hill Road or not?
They asked for one? Did I miss that?
Oh, I don't think so, but I know it's a public way and it's it's out of our jurisdiction, but we also have. An approved subdivision at one end of it, and we have another site plan that we worked on for the the barn. And the parking lots, so I think we do have some interest in that, I'm not necessarily. Suggesting it, or maybe I am, but it's an opportunity for us, if we were all. Opposed to it or in favor of it to reinforce the selectmen's. Ultimate decision, maybe.
Well, I can just say, I I drove that road for many years when I worked at Fidelity, I got to hold fifteen years. It's a beautiful road, it'd be a shame for it would be closed, especially since the town purchased. You know, restriction over the land to keep it nice and viewable for everyone that goes down there, so. If we're gonna write anything, I'd be in favor of saying that.
To leave it open.
Yes, to leave it open.
Anyone else?
Is the proposal to close it permanently?
I think it's it's to leave it open to the public until you get past the last parking lot. And then it would just be, it's pretty much the downhill part of the road. From the peak, you know, the highest point of the road, down to the intersection of Dairy Farm Lane, it's probably several hundred feet, but it would. From what I understand, that road would still exist. But it would be close to vehicles on a normal day. And therefore open for pedestrian and bikes and whatever, but not cars and trucks. But the rest of the road would remain open. That's the way I understand it.
I think, thanks for explaining that, Mr. Chairman. Personally, I'm not in favor of the planning board advocating on that issue.
Anyone else?
Mr. Morris, I don't, just the way I understood it would be from, I think Whitney Bill's house full on going north, it would be shut down, I don't. I think, is that the parking lot you're thinking of?
Isn't there an overflow parking lot just past Whitney's house at the high point? It's at the high point of the road.
It's for the trails, it's for the.
Right across the street.
Yeah, right across the street, but I think it's, it's right there. Once you get past that, there's no other parking, I don't think.
Well, maybe we should lay, leave it alone then. Interesting to see what happens.
Sectioning off the one-way portion of the road, so residents urge sectioning off the one-way portion of the road past ten Chestnut Hill Road. And the trailhead parking lot to the intersection of the new development on Dairy Farm Lane. So it's basically from the trailhead parking. To the sub, new subdivision, to make it no, so no cars can go through there. You can walk and hike and probably ride your bike, but they don't want anything, any kind of car or truck, so.
Chairman Morris, I'd be willing to have the conversation, I don't know when they're making a decision, but I would like to read the letter in thorough detail, because I think we were provided a copy of that letter. And it was multiple pages, and I do think it, you know. I I know we've had interest in supporting some of those developments there, so I I would like to at least have a chance to review that letter and make a comment. Can't say at this point whether I, it's certainly not in our purview, but I am not really prepared to say either way if we should have a voice or not.
And it's posted on the Dropbox, if you want to go look back there under the planners report, either the last meeting or the, I think it was the last meeting on the thirteenth. If not, I can resend it out to everybody, so you can be, so you can just open it and look at it.
Thanks, Karina.
Well, if the selectmen haven't acted on it by our next meeting, maybe we can include it in the planners report again, have this, have this discussion.
Okay.
Anything else?
Make a motion that we approve the minutes from September thirteenth, two thousand twenty is written.
Most has been made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing not all in favor, Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes?
Latrell, yes.
Holyan, yes.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve the minutes from September twentieth, two thousand twenty-one, as written.
Second.
Most has been made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing not all in favor, Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes?
Latrell, yes.
Holyan, yes.
Our next meeting is October eighteenth. Anything else?
Thank you for facilitating, Sarah.
Always good to see you, Sarah.
Absolutely, happy to, always good to see everybody as well.
And Marty, thank you for switching out my computer.